Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lundary Town Council meeting for April 5th, 2021. Please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's remain standing and for all of our homegrown first responders and everything who continue to serve our community during this pandemic, let's have good thoughts for them. Okay, so first order of business is public comment. Is anyone here for public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Name and address for our record, please, sir. Yeah, please be seated.
Paul Skelark, 20 Woodbine Drive.
Hi, Paul. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you guys?
What can we do for you?
So I just wanted to bring up, you know, at the town election on March 9th, there was Article 14, which urged the New Hampshire General Court to be fully transparent in the redistricting process and not engage in any partisan gerrymandering. And by a vote of 1449 to 550, which is nearly a 3-1 margin, the article passed with overwhelming support in the community. We know that through their votes and public pronouncements that our seven elected state reps voted in opposition HB 121, which would have established independent redistricting commission. We also know that Representative Wayne McDonald, within his November 4th op-ed in Lundary Times, voiced his opposition to Article 14, claiming that it was superfluous and wasn't necessary, whatever his opposition might have been. So the article, as it reads, said if it was approved by the voters, that the record of the vote shall be transmitted by written notice from the town council or town manager to Lundary State legislators informing them of the request from constituents within 30 days by the vote. We're about a week away from that at this point. I'm just wondering at this point, has the written record been transmitted by the town council or town manager to the reps?
It'll be sent by the town manager when we plan to comply.
Okay. And when is that happening?
We'll make it happen this week.
Okay.
That's what it said. That's what we'll do.
Well, I haven't heard any mention of it. I haven't seen it on any agendas. So I assume that nothing had been moving forward in that regard. So I thought it was important to bring it up because it was obviously a vote taken and we need to make sure that we move forward with how it's been written. Okay.
No one's brought up any issue to me. And as far as I know, it's good to go.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Paul, I'll get you a copy of it.
Okay, that would be great. And if we could too, how would that be transmitted? Would you normally?
Last year, I'm trying to think, last year, we had a similar issue on, not a similar issue, but another thing on the ballot that had the town council transmit something to the legislature and the governor. That went by resolution because this one says it can be done by the town manager. It'd probably be done by a letter on town letterhead.
Okay. Will that be signed by each of the state reps just so we can make sure we have a record of them receiving it? Or can it be?
I can have it sent to the state reps at the same time that I send it up to whomever it needs to go to in accordance with the Warren article.
Okay. Okay, great. And how would we know that they've received it? Is there some?
Well, we can email with a receipt requested, right?
I can just please say, you know, please confirm you've received the email.
Okay, great. I'd appreciate knowing that. Once they receive it, it'd be great. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Paul.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment this evening? Name and address for the records, please.
Marge Bedoy, 189 Litchfield Road Conservation Commission. For the last couple of weeks on WMUR News, they have mentioned the state drought conditions. DES has come out reporting that 72% of the state is officially abnormally dry right now, which is up from 41% that was reported in December, pretty much the same place we were this time last year. We are currently 60% of normal precipitation. The low level of snowpack runoff has decreased snow, stream flows 20%, and below average precipitation and above average temperatures are projected for the upcoming months. And DES recommends having a plan for multi-year drought conditions. So the outlook is not good. I would like to propose that we implement even outdoor watering restrictions now to get people in the right frame of mind. And so people are aware that this is not going to be the year to put in that new lawn because they're going to be sad come July when it's not growing.
So we have a call with DES tomorrow, right, about water in general, about public water and everything?
We do. And I monitor the drought map every week when it comes out on Thursdays. And Marge is right, we are in abnormally dry conditions unfortunately.
So let's talk with DES tomorrow and then we'll come back with something for the next meeting.
Aren't we still under drought restrictions from when we implemented them in the fall?
We would be, except we don't meet the technical qualifications of our ordinance, which would require it to be, you know, up to the next level. So we're still abnormally dry. We're not in a drought, official drought yet.
Exactly. And one other thing, in DES's online instructions for communities, they call it right out and said significant reductions in water use only occur when mandatory restrictions are implemented. So all the education we try to give people is typically ignored. And partly it's not ignored, they just don't, they're not looking. They're not reading in the paper. They're not, you know, checking the websites. They're not getting the information. So I was thinking that when we do do something, that lovely sign in front of the high school would be a nice place to put that.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that was, that's what the students proposed when they asked to have the sign put up there that it could be used for all community. Yeah, I think what we want to ask DES tomorrow is what we've learned working with DES is unless we push them, they generally, you know, don't respond until we push. So we'll have a conversation with them tomorrow. And it would help us if they would take a stronger position so that we could take a stronger position?
We actually don't need them to take a stronger position.
I understand. I'm just saying it would be helpful.
Yeah, but regulations, there's an RSA that says we have the right to implement those restrictions. Thanks for listening.
Just don't ask me to determine what the odd and even days are.
Never mind. We're not even going there. Anyone else for public comment this evening?
Hi, everyone. Sherry Farrell, Lundary Town Clerk. I just wanted to make everyone aware that April is dog registration month. So please, if you can come out, register your puppies. It helps everyone, keeps everyone safe. And also, if your dog is ever lost or missing, we can then help to find it. Exciting news, this Saturday, we're going to have our first vaccination clinic for our puppies for rabies to help out the residents a little bit because it's tough to get appointments right now. It's been something that we've been trying to do for many years. They used to do it in the past, but we're bringing it back. So if you could all help spread the word, it'll be just $15 to get your rabies vaccination for your dog. Our wonderful Myrna in town, the Lundary Vet, will be taking care of that for us and everything will be donated. So there'll be no cost to the town at all. And we're just hoping a lot of people come out to take advantage of this rabies clinic that we'll be having.
Held at?
Oh, held at the fire station. The police department, the fire station has been wonderful. They've all jumped on board with it. Also, special thanks to David Carver, who is our somewhat still new animal control officer. He's been wonderful. Christina Gentti in our office has just run with this project. It takes a lot to pull something like this off, but with their, you know, able hands and devotion to it, it's going to happen. So we're pretty excited. And I mean, you know, just make sure, the time, John's helping me, yes, thank you, thank you. The time is this Saturday, 10 o'clock in the morning until 12:00. And if we have, you know, lines, of course, we'll do our best to not turn anyone away. But it should be exciting, our first one. And we're going to make sure that we have publicity, you know, around it. Kirby's going to get the word out there for us. So if you could help us do, that would be great. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Yes.
If I could flashback a little bit to something that Marge said, I want to, it just flashed in my head, recurring thought that in times of drought arsenic contamination goes up. When you have natural arsenic in groundwater, it becomes more concentrated and it could be more of a contaminant in times of drought.
So what time's our call with DES tomorrow? Is it 3:00?
3:00.
3:00. Yes, let's make sure we cover all that off with DES and get them to take a public stand. Anything else for public comment? Anything from the council? Okay, moving on. New business, Resolution 2021-08. A resolution relative to the extension of the Town of Lundary temporary leave policy. I've been advised that we don't need a public hearing on this this evening. This is the policy that we implemented during COVID-19. And my understanding is that we're looking to extend this approximately 60 days to May 31st, 2021. Is there anything else?
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify a little bit, this is the paid sick leave provisions of our previous policy. And as you said, we'd just be extending the deadline from March 31st to May 31st.
Make a motion to accept Resolution 2021-08 as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote.
Aye, Deb Paul.
Aye, John Farrell.
Aye, Jim Butler.
Aye, Tom Dolan.
For the record, Councilor Green did text me and tell me he is running late. Okay. Next item, appointment of the tax collector. Who will be presenting?
I believe you have a form in front of you.
I do.
An appointment form. Yep.
I do. Pursuant to RSA 41:33, we, the undersigned members of the Lundary County Council, hereby appoint Eric Newman of 766 Fremont Road, Chester, New Hampshire, as the tax collector Lundary, New Hampshire, commencing April 1st, 2021 and ending March 31st, 2022. The salary for the said position shall be $68,099. So I'll accept, are there any questions? I'll accept a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Need a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote.
Aye, Deb Paul.
Aye, John Farrell.
Aye, Jim Butler.
Aye, Tom Dolan.
Motion carries 4-0. Ms. Newman, thank you for your service. And I'm sure everyone will be happy to see the tax collector. They always are. Okay. Moving right along on record time here. Discussion on exit 4A TIF district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you have a document that I've given you for discussion this evening, I'm looking for consensus of moving forward with the proposed TIF district in the area of what will be the future exit 4A and is on land currently owned by what most people know as Woodmont Commons. What are the reasons that I'm bringing this to the council this evening? Number one, so this represents, this area represents about 200 acres of prime developable land. It's very similar to how Pettingill Road was prior to development. When Ray Resort Drive went in, you probably recall, they did a curb cut for the town. But it sat undeveloped for the better half of five or six years after that curb cut was put in, largely because of the cost of bringing utilities and roadway infrastructure to the site. It was cost prohibitive for most developers. This is very similar to that situation where you have very developable land that will be accessed off of exit 4A. But the land is all raw right now, meaning that the utilities are not there. Some are close by, such as water and gas. There is sewer close by to Derry. However, the long-range plans have this sewer going to Manchester. So there will be some major costs involved even once 4A goes in for it to be developed. Here's what I can tell you. We've had a lot of inquiries about this land. Usually, there's a couple a month of potentially large users. And the first question they ask every time is, where are the utilities? What is the status of the utilities at that area? If we did a TIF district here, it would comply with the Woodmont Commons Development Agreement. The Development Agreement does contemplate being able to do a TIF district. And we're also looking to increase our commercial valuation in town. And certainly, any new commercial development in town helps increase the valuation. As, you know, we saw in the last reval for the town, there was a shift in the burden from commercial to residential because the residential values are going up faster than commercial values are. And so the more commercial value we bring online, the more it lessens the burden on residents for property taxes. And obviously, it makes the area more financially attractive. I'll note that, as in the case with Pettingill Road, as soon as we implemented the TIF district, within six months, we had our first developer Pratt Whitney UPS that moved in that area. And then everything else kind of felt like dominos after that. So again, what we're looking to do would be creating a TIF district on property that's owned by, it's largely Pillsbury Realty, Hydrax, they're associated with them. But again, most people know it as Woodmont Commons East of I-93. The current value of the land would be retained and so would continue generating tax revenue for the town. And future development agreements would be done in the similar way that we did all the ones at Pettingill, whereby the town would reimburse the developer upon completion and certificate of occupancy. So there'd be no money outlaid by the town before there'd be any development there. And then I would just note that this is just one economic tool in the toolbox of many. You know, with the LHRA now being townwide, we potentially have them to seek out as development starts to come in here. There's a potential for federal funding for infrastructure, which I will get into a little bit more as part of my town manager report later on in the meeting. And then, as I've mentioned to the council before, we will be receiving $2.6 million from the federal government as part of the American Rescue Plan. That money's parked aside right now. Could be used for water infrastructure, could be used for economic development, infrastructure, depending on how much we get from the state in terms of the water. So this just adds, as I said, another tool for the town to use to help spur economic development in this area. And I'll note that the design for exit 4A is on the governor and council agenda for this week to be approved. They're still on schedule right now to begin construction in the spring of 2022. And certainly, any large developer that's looking to go in would concurrently be doing construction at the same time that the exit interchange is being constructed. So if there is a consensus among the council this evening, what I would do is bring forward a resolution at the next meeting for a first reading and then a public hearing on TIF district at the first meeting in May. Questions?
I do have some questions. Kevin, just for some of the residents out there, could you explain to people what a TIF is, how it works? I think that's important. We're throwing it around thinking people understand it, but not everybody does.
Yeah, so TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. And so as soon as you declare an area of land to be in a TIF, any amount of taxes that are generated above what the baseline was go into a side account, if you will, this TIF account. And so it doesn't get added to the tax base until the town decides to add it back to the tax base. The way the TIF worked at Pettingill Road is when we created TIFs there, there were developers that came in whom we had development agreements with. And we used part of that tax revenue that came in after they got their CO and so they started generating property taxes. We took that money to reimburse them certain costs of roadway infrastructure and sewer infrastructure. Upon completion of the reimbursement, the TIF was closed and all of that tax dollars went back on the tax rolls. We currently do not have any TIFs open at Pettingill Road right now. I believe the longest it took us to do reimbursement was two and a half years. And then, like I said, the TIFs were closed after that. So that's generally how it works. And so the town never goes into the red, so to speak, but only starts paying back once we actually have the tax revenue.
Okay. I have a couple of other questions. So over in that area, is Derry going to be doing a TIF as well to encourage? And is it possible so that they link up? Do you know what I'm saying? Because it's such a connected area that if we're doing something like this, and I know it's kind of for the one developer, but if we're doing something like this, we want this to hook up to that to make it seamless, you know, going back and forth. So I don't know if you've reached out or have had conversation yet.
Yeah, I haven't talked to Bev Donovan over there about it. You know, they could certainly do a TIF. And, you know, I'd be happy to have that conversation with her to see if it's something, you know, they would want to do in tandem.
They don't generally manage TIFs the same way we do. Their TIFs have stayed open for many, many years.
Well, I'm just thinking for when we're putting down the infrastructure so that it aligns and connects, instead of being like cow paths, it's more straight lines to make it run more smoothly. The other thing is, as you said, it only takes around two years? And that was for what, 200 acres?
No, it's, so it's not based off the acreage. It's more based off of the amount that you're agreeing to reimburse them for the cost of, like I said, roadway infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. In the case of Pettingill Road, the developments that we did TIFs with UPS Pratt Whitney, FW Web, EFI, were all very good tax generating users. And so the amount of money we were receiving in tax revenue, it didn't take long for us to pay them back for the amount we said we would reimburse them through the Development Agreement. So in each of those cases, it was, you know, like I said, around two and a half years, I think, at the most.
And just for the residents again, can you give them an idea of a ballpark? It doesn't have to be exact. After, you know, we closed out the TIF in approximately two to three years, what kind of revenues those kinds of companies were bringing in to the town? Do you know what I mean? Is that possible or is that confidential?
No, FW Web is 1.1 million.
Oh, I thought I was saying something I shouldn't.
EFI is 379,000.
Every year, John?
These are annual numbers. UPS Pratt Whitney's around a half a million. Bellevance will probably be around 180,000. And then FedEx is probably another 200,000. So probably about $2.2 million out of all of it.
I just want people to understand the whole premise of it because I got a lot of phone calls from it, from, you know, just what is it? You know, are we going to be paying? Like, we put in that Pettingill Road and it took forever, it seems, and after paying for that.
I think the first TIF was done in 18 months and the second one took two and a half years.
I'm just telling you what people, so I'm trying to make it clear so that people understand.
Sure.
Yeah, and I said this at the time when we did the Pettingill Road TIFs, those developments would not have happened if we didn't have that TIF. And I see the same thing happening now with the people we've been talking to that are looking at 4A. We've had users walk away because there is no mechanism for the utilities. And it's, as I said, it's very expensive. For instance, the sewer alone is, to go to Manchester is about $5.5 million. It's expensive. So, you know, getting ahead of it now by having the TIF now, unlike what we did with Pettingill where we waited five years, I think would be very advantageous for us.
Tom?
Yeah, I think for people to understand, I can explain it in more simplified terms. That, for example, if you have a TIF where the town puts up, let's say, a quarter of a million dollars for part of the project. And then what we found with Pettingill, some of the objection was, well, why would we ever put the town's money in when the developer should be? This is developers, it's their game. Well, it's about, it's just about the math. You just got to focus on the math. So if by, for the town putting up a quarter of a million dollars in that case, if the development started two years earlier because of that, which I think it did, two years at a million dollars or $2 million apiece for each year. So we could wait and say, okay, developer, you continue to attract prospects. And when you get them in a couple of years, you can afford to put that $250,000 in. Well, by us doing it, we spent $250,000, but we got back $4 million in taxes that we would never have got. We would have got them maybe in year three and year four, but we got them in year one and year two that once those years are gone, you can't go back. So we invest, it's, think about investing. In this, in that case, was a quarter million dollars and the return was 4 million. And so you just got to do the math. Say, well, do you want the 4 million or not? If you want, I don't want the 4 million. I'm going to, on a piece of principle and saying, I'm not ever getting involved with private development, we would have lost $4 million. And then it's very easy to figure out what the tax impact of that would have been.
Yeah, as I recall, we sat with the chief operating officer of FW Web upstairs and he had two locations. One was willing to do the TIF, the other one wasn't. He went with us. And that's, and they now pay us over a million dollars a year. So that turned out to be okay. But those are the conversations I guess we got to have. So do keep in mind, we do need to go to the school board. They need to buy in. They need to be part of this, they need to be part of this as well. And the county and the state will continue to get their money. But the school board needs to get on board with us. So we're going to have to go talk to them after we pass our resolution.
Okay. And the only other thing is on the LHRA, I didn't, did we ever figure, did we ever resolve all of the questions that I was bringing up? Or are we going to have another thing about that? Because that's on part of this and I don't know.
So in Tom's liaison report, he went to the meeting and he's coming back with answers later.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. He only just mentioned it to me just before the meeting.
Okay.
No worries. Anything else on TIFs?
That's all I got.
Okay. All right, so I guess I need a consensus. Do we want to bring that forward for a resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. Old business, none. Approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented for, in our packets for March 15th, 2021.
So moved.
And a second, please. I have a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative and then we'll move on. Liaison reports. Now we're going to hear about LHRA.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I met with the LHRA and conducted a Zoom meeting with them. And what I did is I invited them to send representatives to a future council meeting, whether it be our next meeting or the one after that, for them to come in and present a presentation about themselves, their organization, what their mission is, what they do, and some recent projects that they have done in town and how their mission will now evolve with the changing of the boundaries that we have recently accomplished with them. And they said they're pleased to do that. And they're going to call either me or Kirby to get on the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, thank you.
And I, I, I offered them ten or fifteen minutes. It'll, uh, it'd be at your discretion how long you want them to run, but I told them
Well, it takes the information out.
For about ten or fifteen minutes to give us a, a presentation. And part of it's the historical presentation of what they've done for, for recent projects and so forth. Uh, so I, and I think that will help, uh, answer some of the questions that Deb had as well.
Okay, you had, you had, um, order test force two, right?
Also, uh, we've, we began our water, water committee, uh, meetings. Uh, we, we held the first, uh, meeting, uh, almost a couple of weeks ago now. And we have our second meeting this week. And, uh, while the, while the town has a, uh, meeting with, uh, D E S, uh, not specific about water, but about other, other issues tomorrow. On Wednesday, we have our regular scheduled bi-weekly water meeting. And D E S will also present at that meeting via Zoom. And they will, uh, uh, be discussing the issues with our, with our wells and so forth. And so, and the public is certainly willing to, uh, rather able to dial in to that. We're, we're gonna test our technological capabilities. Uh, it may be a little lumpy, but, uh, uh, if people wanna make sure they can hear what the E S says, they could, should probably come to be here in audience, in the audience. Uh, you can dial in from home, but we're still not exactly sure how that's gonna work.
Actually, I, I don't, I just, I don't mean to interrupt, but I just wanna make sure it's clear. They can't actually dial in from home. Since we will be in person, they can come in person
Okay.
to see the meeting or they can watch it via, it'll be on the cable station as well.
That's good.
Thank you.
So, um, uh, that's, that's the opportunity we're gonna have to, uh, to try to pin down, uh, D E S about their recommendations for testing and, and, uh, uh, specific contamination limits, uh, for their recommendations. Uh, and we'll juxtapose that against EPA's, uh, requirements as well. Uh, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to move forward and that will eventually become a workshop where, uh, we'll be able to go across the street and, uh, bring in, uh, as many members of the town, uh, as would like to come in and talk to the various vendors that will have, uh, that will recommend, have recommended through our purchasing policy, uh, to do water testing for them. I mean, a lot of the water testing has already started. People are, uh, doing that privately and some are getting it done through D E S. Uh, so, uh, we'll, we'll have that ready to go as well. So it's, things are moving along, maybe not quite as fast as all of us would like, but, uh, it's, uh, it, it is a, a big subject. Uh, and we wanna make sure we cover all the bases. And that, that meeting will be Wednesday at, uh, seven o'clock.
Fantastic. Anyone else for liaison reports?
Yeah, I have one for the Heritage Committee. Uh, and, uh, we had, uh, there were actually several, uh, projects that came up. Uh, one was the Dairy Medical Building up at Woodmont Commons. The other one was, uh, an Eastern Bank, uh, up on, uh, off of, uh, the corner of Garden Lane.
Eastern or Enterprise?
It's Enterprise.
Enterprise, I'm sorry. Uh, and, and also
Eastern can come too if they want.
Huh?
Oh, yeah, they can all come.
And, uh, uh, also, uh, the developers looking to put in an eighteen-hole three-part course up in Woodmont and, uh, a design came in for a, uh, the golf course, uh, building. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, the Dairy Medical, uh, building, uh, was gonna be located or they proposed it being located on Michael's Way. I personally didn't like the design of the building. It doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't fit in, uh, with, uh, the P U D and what people in town expect. Uh, the orientation of the building was such that the parking lot was on the side of the building, uh, not in the rear. Uh, so, uh, they are supposed to come back to us, uh, with the revised, uh, design. Uh, I personally told them that I was not game for what they presented to us. I, I don't think the townspeople would be happy with it. Uh, the bank, uh, wasn't a problem. It, it, it fit very nicely. The golf course, the, uh, the, uh, the building and the golf course was, was pretty, uh, how can I put it? Futuristic, let's put a lot of glass and there's metal and, and it just didn't fit at all. I mean, it stuck out like a sore thumb. So, uh, they're gonna come back with us on that. And that's where we stand now.
Anything else? So, um, we've had a lot of activity with the school board in, uh, the last month. And, um, one thing was I was approached, um, about their snow removal and how much they spend in the main parking lot for snow removal. Um, I asked the town manager to speak with facilities director and, uh, for what they're bringing private contractors coming in to do, is it, you know, is it possible for us to come in a couple of days later after the storms are over and with our equipment move the snow versus paying tens of thousands of dollars to people to move snow? Uh, the other one was is that the, um, the school board member who's on the building committee, approached me about having a conversation with the town manager about land in town, since we just bought some land or we're in the process of buying some land, and about, um, about relocation of the school district office back to the center of town. I don't know whether this is something that's, you know, near term or long term, but, you know, he asked me if he could approach the town manager and have a conversation about that, which of course I said yes to anything they want to talk to the town manager about. So, um, I don't really know where that's all going, but that's, um, that's just the current activity. Um, anything else? Okay, town manager report.
Thank you. So as I alluded to in my last presentation, um, I was recently approached by Congressman Pappas's office to, uh, submit, uh, any shovel-ready, if you will, infrastructure projects that I think they're looking to submit as part of the president's, um, infrastructure plan that he's putting forward. Uh, and so there were two projects I sent over to his office, uh, last week. Uh, one, uh, was, um, adding sewer infrastructure to, um, the, uh, exit for A Woodmont Commons East. Uh, again, that's about a five and a half million dollar sewer project, uh, to Manchester. Uh, the other project I submitted was, uh, the expansion of, uh, Pettingill Road from two lanes to four lanes. Uh, New Hampshire D O T has informed us that, uh, any more expansion at Pettingill Road is gonna require, um, an expansion of that roadway because of the queuing that is now occurring during peak travel times at Ray Resort Drive and Pettingill Road. Uh, and because of the way the development agreement was structured back when it was put in with, um, Peter Nash building half of Pettingill Road, uh, any future expansion was gonna be, uh, have to be borne by the town and not by future developers, uh, on, uh, Nash's land. Um, the good news is that when that road was built, it was done and graded so that it could be easily expanded. The drainage and such was all done so, to accommodate four lanes and not two lanes. So literally you're talking about putting asphalt down, uh, with not a whole lot of infrastructure work. So the cost to do that is about four million dollars. Um, I was informed, uh, I think on Friday that that particular project, uh, could qualify for a separate transportation bill, uh, that they would like to submit it for. And so we're having to provide them additional information, um, uh, on that project this week uh, so that they can submit that. Um, the sewer infrastructure project, um, we're gonna have a chance to do a one-minute presentation this Friday on why that would be a, a benefit to the town, uh, and, and economic development. Um, all of these projects that were submitted by communities across the first district in New Hampshire can be found on his website. Uh, when I looked today, there were something like two hundred and sixty of them. Uh, I was told they're gonna be whittled down to ten by next week. They have their own committee that's reviewing every project and will whittle it down to ten projects. Um, so, uh, keep you all posted on that.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question, Kevin?
Sure.
Two, well, two questions. One, I'm, I'm just a little concerned about four lanes of traffic funneling down into two into one, since we already have all that problems over at Litchfield and High Range. I mean, I think if we could look at a, a way to funnel it in a little bit better so that there doesn't bottleneck, do you know what I'm trying to say? Um, there's so many issues with the traffic and speed over there. And if we get, you know, more coming in at the, and then they're gonna come down into that one little road. It's, I, I just, I just think that we should do, like, if you're taking the time to look over there, look at a overview of how that leaches, how those roads leach out into the town of London Dairy and how that will affect
Yeah.
the traffic moving forward. I, I'm just a little concerned only because that's such a problem area.
Well, the only thing I would, I would note is that when Pettingill Road was designed and engineered, it was designed and engineered for four lanes. And, uh, it was always, you know, it was, is back, you know, as far back as two thousand and eight, it was always supposed to be a four-lane road.
No, I do remember that.
Yeah.
But I guess, I don't think any of us really anticipated the amount of traffic that would be there.
Sure.
Um, and how that would impact the roads a little, just a little further out of that. I, I don't know if that's possible
Yeah.
to widen the scope of it just a little bit, just to see if you've got four lanes filtering down into just a, you know, one lane or a two lane, what's gonna, how that's gonna work. And this is totally off topic. What is the status of the light on Stonehenge twenty-eight?
Well, Deb, your timing's great because, uh, John Trady and I were just talking about this today as we were talking about these other projects. Uh, and I went back in my notes to look, uh, New Hampshire D O T is supposed to be doing public hearings this spring.
Oh.
Uh, and so, um, Melody at New Hampshire D O T, who's been working with us on this, uh, I've gotta reach out to her to see when she's planning on doing it. Um, but on the timeline does say springtime, they're supposed to be doing public hearings on it.
Yeah.
With construction still not scheduled until twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Well, as long as it's still moving forward, I mean, that's positive.
Sure.
I just was curious. Um, but yeah, I, I, I don't know. If you could maybe get back to me and just let me know if that's possible.
Oh, well.
Cause I do get a lot of people calling.
I'll talk to John about it.
And I'm concerned about it because, yeah, I'm, I live near there and it, it does affect me as well. So I'll be honest.
Okay. Um, anything else? Except for me? Lisa?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, um, so Joe, we have, um, a couple of, um, signatures we're gonna need from you tonight.
Good.
And those are over in the packets. Um, do I have anything else from the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That's a poor joke.
It's gone.
Timing's everything. I'll accept the second, please.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative, we're adjourned. Our next meeting is, um, April nineteenth at, uh, seven P M here and then May third after that. Thank you.